Today is Monday, February the 24th. It is 4:02 PM, running just a minute or two behind here. If I could go ahead and get a call of order and a roll call, Madam Clerk?
Madam Clerk, here. Commissioner Blanchard?
Here.
Commissioner Crawford?
Here.
Commissioner Hardy?
Here.
Commissioner Householder?
Here.
If I can get everyone that's able to do the Pledge of Allegiance and stand up and a moment of silence. Thank you. We do have awards and proclamations today.
Item 3.1, Presentation of Plaque of Appreciation to Outgoing Employee Council Members.
I don't have any plaques up here. Oh, they're over there. Okay.
There they are.
Where are they? I'm not going to go in any particular order, but I will start off with Ms. Sharon Benson. I do have your plaque and appreciation for your service rendered to the City of Salina, Kansas, 2012 through 2013. I know what a good job you do. I've worked with you before. And I just saw you a little bit. Okay, and next I have Ms. Luanne Elsie, our former city clerk, who I've also worked with, and I know what a great job you've done in the past, in appreciation for your service rendered to the City of Salina, Kansas, 2012 through 2013. And last but not least, I have Tony Miller. And Tony, here is your plaque, in appreciation for your service rendered to the City of Salina, Kansas. I personally haven't worked with you, but you got your plaque. Thanks so much. Have a good day.
You too.
Thanks. Okay, at this time we'll go ahead and do citizen forums. This is an opportunity for anyone to come up and speak regarding an item that is not on today's agenda. Okay, seeing no one, go ahead and move on to our consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of February 10, 2014. Item 6.2, Resolution Number 14-7082, appointing members to the Business Improvement District Number One Design Review Board, Convention and Tourism Committee, Salina Airport Authority Board, Human Relations Commission, Arts and Humanities Commission, and Building Advisory Board. Item 6.3, award of contract for the 2014 micro-surfacing to Vance Brothers Incorporated in the amount of $676,433.75, with a 10% construction contingency of $67,643.38. Item 6.4, acknowledged receipt of Special Law Enforcement Trust Fund report. Item 6.5, authorize the city manager to approve the purchase of used vehicles for development services, utilities, and parks and recreation.
Is there anything that a commissioner would like to strike from the agenda or to amend?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to remove item 6.3 from the consent agenda.
6.3.
And I would move that we accept the consent agenda as presented, less 6.3.
Second. I have a motion and a second, less 6.3. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. And I'll bring 6.3 back. Mr. Stack?
Madam Mayor and Commissioners, this project was bid recently. Vance Brothers did a good job for us last year as a subcontractor. They get some pretty good bids. We were happy to see there was another contractor that was close, close in the bidders as well because it was quite a bit less than last year. So it was a bigger contract, we believe is the reason for it. What questions do you have, Commissioner Hardy?
Yeah, Mr. Stack, just out of my own curiosity, I was looking at your map here and it says double micro, single micro.
Yes.
Is the double a more intense kind of repair?
Yes, it is. It's, we've had pretty good luck with micro, but some of our streets have gotten to the point where, you know, it's, a single micro may not do as good a job, and the double micros have done really well. So it's basically one coat of micro, and then you come back another day and put another coat of micro on it.
Does it have anything to do with longevity of the process?
We believe it adds life and it depends on how poorly the street condition is, but it does a better job sealing up, you know, cracks and that kind of thing.
I mean, you're saying the double versus the single?
Yes. It adds, it adds some time, as well as, it's really more based on the condition. It's more of a condition thing. It's, we've either let it go too far, or the, the street has aged beyond the point where a single's going to work, really. We'd like to, as we improve our streets and keep up with this program, and as we keep track of them, we'd like not to have them get into the category of after double micro. So that's, that's really the point, is that why do we have to double micro that? Well, it's aged beyond what we need for a single micro, so if that's a fair answer to that question.
Yeah.
But it, yeah, we would like to get to the point where we can micro everything when it's supposed to be, before it gets too bad. That would be the goal eventually.
And I was looking at the bids versus the engineer's estimate, and it seems to me that 30% is quite a discrepancy between engineer's estimate and, and I could see where you might have one low-ball bidder, but when you have two that are right there together, it makes me wonder, well, was, how accurate was the engineer's estimate?
Yeah, we base that basically on last year's bids, and Monarch Oil was the one that was close to us. They were a little bit higher, but we have historically seen around $280 a ton. I'd say the last four years, that's been about what it is. So this one was remarkably better. It's a...
There's no way for you to anticipate that?
It's pretty tough. It's, I guess, we're usually early. This is, we're early in the year, so a lot of the cities, we try to get out ahead of things because we feel like that helps us to get contractors and get the best price because once they start filling up with their contracts and they don't, you know, bid as hard, so it's a little hard. We usually bid early in, or February, I guess this is still February, so yeah, we're usually early January, February. There were no other cities that bid it, so we have to go to KDOT bids. Those are from last year, and so it's, price of oil has either gone up or gone down, so it's, we're just, we're not the best at estimating that. But historically, we've been close with just kind of the trend over time. So yeah, it was quite a bit higher.
Right.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Dan, I just wondered how long it's been since we resurfaced North Santa Fe, because I remember there'd be a lot of micro-surfacing down there now.
Okay.
And we've been talking about iron, and North Santa Fe is also an entrance to Salina.
And you say North Santa Fe being basically north of iron?
Right. Well, where you have it on your map, it looks like from north to the Pacific.
Yes.
And I remember that being pretty, pretty much micro-surfaced now. I mean, it seems like there's a lot of lines.
A lot of micro already there.
Well, I can't remember the date. There was a, more of a major-type project up that goes all the way to Pacific because at Pacific, the lanes narrow, I recall, and I'm trying to recall the year, and I may...
2007 was when Broadway and Pacific were done, and they narrowed up that intersection right there at Santa Fe that you're talking about, yeah, that made it a little more narrow so you could cross easier pedestrian-wise. It's a really wide road, and so at that intersection, they proposed, I think roundabouts at some point in the past, and then ended up with just no signal and a smaller intersection. So, but micro-surfacing-wise, I'm not sure. We can look and see when the last time we did it. It was, you're saying there's a lot of them? Is that what you're thinking?
Well...
Any different micro-surfacing?
I mean, I just look at that as, as also an entryway to the, to the city, I mean, to some extent.
Yeah, we, you know, for the surfacings and the micro-surfacing, milling inlays, our crack seal program, a lot of our surface treatment programs, you basically just deal with what's there. So we weren't looking at impact street or that type of a situation here. Now, someday, we rebuild that section of road, or we want to do some major improvements there, that's when we would look at that more.
Yeah, okay.
We're just trying to maintain, you know, what's there. Iron's an example of pavement. We can't put anything on that road that's going to save it at this point. There's no micro-surfacing or milling inlay. Nothing's going to help. We have to rebuild the whole thing. So a lot of our roads aren't in that category, but the surface just needs to be dealt with. That's why it's just a micro-surfacing we're proposing there.
Was the, was that portion of Pacific between Santa Fe and Ninth, was that not done when they did, when they redid the road, or back in '07, or whatever that was?
Yes.
Was that, was that part of it?
Mm-hmm.
So that already, that portion of the road already needs to be?
Seven years.
Okay.
That's, that's kind of, that's a good point. So that's seven years is kind of, that's, that's getting the most out of your milling inlays or your newly constructed. If you wait longer than that, then it starts to deteriorate more, and we feel like if we can get a micro on that, then it keeps the surface from deteriorating quickly. So that's a good point.
And so then from Santa Fe East, is that all concrete then?
No, it's, it's recent, it was overlaid later. It was '09 or '10 when we overlaid east of Santa Fe to the concrete at Front Street.
At Front Street, okay.
Yep. So that's been, that's in the five-year, I think, four to five-year timeframe, so it'll be microed here in the near future, but not next year, or not this year.
You have a, an allowance of 10% for contingency, is that...
Yeah, the, this one, last year, it's, as they get out there and they're micro-surfacing, they've got dials in there. "Oh, we're at 25 pounds, we're at 28 pounds." We really have to keep an eye on them to know that they're at the rate that we specify, and sometimes we have to go a little heavier because we're not quite getting it the best coverage, and the contractors are usually, of course, trying to put it on heavier, so we kind of battle with them a little bit on that. But it does help us to be able to have a little leeway to put a little more down, or do a scratch course, or do a double micro if we have to in a certain spot. So that's, that's the reason for a 10% contingency. We felt like we had really good prices here, and we, we actually thought about coming back to you with a change order in the future to do some more micro-surfacing, but we're going to see how they do first.
Would, my last question is, after hearing about Iron Avenue improvements, would this amount also be available for that, or are we just talking about robbing Peter to pay Paul kind of thing?
Would this, which amount are you talking about?
The amount, the difference between the engineer's estimate and the bid amount.
Well, we, it's a little bit of a, it's all somewhat out of the same pot. Iron would be one that's going to be, have some bond funds associated with it, but gas tax, sales tax, that's what pays for the majority of our street repairs, and so it's all, it's all fair game, I guess you'd say. We, we proposed basically the cost savings, we're going to budget into another, we're going to have a milling and lay project to you in a few, few weeks, and another milling and lay or micro-surfacing project shortly thereafter, because we do have some savings in this project, as well as we budgeted another project to do some different streets. So we felt like we'd use it on those, but there's, there's plenty of options on that. We've got plenty of streets to do, so.
Yeah, Commissioners, presuming the, the Iron Street fits into our debt per forma, then that may be a question. If not, we need, we'll come back to you, but assuming it does, I would take all your maintenance money and keep it in maintenance just because we just have a hard time keeping up, even with the enhancements that you had provided during the budget time. This winter's been really tough. All you hear about is potholes, potholes, and these guys get out and put some cold mix, you know, to get us into the warm season, when we can get some hot mix and kind of do them right. But this has been a tough winter so far in the streets. So any, any amount of maintenance you can, you can, we can do is really good.
Any other questions? Thank you.
More questions for staff? Is there any public comment on this item? CNN, I'd bring it back to the commission.
Madam Mayor, I would move that we award the contract for the 2014 micro-surfacing project number 14-3018 to Vance Brothers Incorporated in the amount of $676,433.75, with a 10% construction contingency of $67,643.38. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries five zero. Move on to administration.
Item 7.1, second reading, ordinance number 14-10731, authorizing the execution of a loan agreement with the state of Kansas for the purpose of financing improvements to the city's water distribution system.
Ordinance number 14-10731 was passed on first reading on February 10, 2014. Since that time, no comments have, have been received. Do I have any public comment on this ordinance? Any other questions for staff regarding this? CNN, I'd bring it back to the commission.
Madam Mayor, I move that we adopt ordinance number 14-10731 on second reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Can I get a roll call, please?
Commissioner Blanchard?
Aye.
Commissioner Crawford?
Aye.
Commissioner Hardy?
Aye.
Commissioner Householder?
Aye.
Madam Clerk?
Aye. That motion passes.
Item 7.2, Resolution Number 14-7080, authorizing the city manager to amend the City of Salina Pay Plan to include employee classifications as proposed.
Ms. Fisher?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. The request before you is to consider adding classifications to our public safety, executive senior staff, and classified wage and salary schedules. The, particularly two of our departments have been working on succession plans in order to attempt to prepare for the loss of experience and skills and knowledge that we will be, we will be losing or have already lost in, in some ways due to a vast number of retirements. This is just one component of the plans. What we're attempting to do in these cases are sometimes rearranging and realigning, rebalancing the roles that some of our individuals have been taking on, or also going out and trying to meet the skill sets that we don't currently have, as well as prepare individuals for a greater responsibility. The Personnel Manual grants the city manager authority to add, remove, or realign current positions, but city commission action is, or approval is required when there is a budgetary impact, and those that would create a budgetary impact are outlined. The police captain adding two positions, adding 10 police sergeants, and as, as those are being added, we do have a reduction of lieutenants. Just a side note, that is not through demotion or taking away individuals' positions, that would be through attrition. And then also adding a deputy finance director and the community engagement coordinator, as those are spelled out. Again, I guess I'll emphasize too that this is just one component. There may have been, the reason the, the dollar amounts or the estimated salaries may not tie directly to what we are adding is because other steps have been taken, other savings, maybe elimination of other positions that are vacant, so a lot of, there's a lot of moving pieces, and again, these are just the budgetary impacts. The annual impact of adding is estimated at $40,000 for the police department, $41,400 for finance, and up to $60,000 for the community engagement coordinator, including the retirement component, as well as salary and wages. That's kind of a brief rundown. I guess I'd go back to, seek action options would be to authorize the city manager to amend the City of Salina Pay Plan to include those classifications, or to direct us, or to ask us to amend via another method. I will note that both Chief Nelson and Mr. Franz are here, particularly for those, again, the high points, I guess, that I gave you on rearranging and adding positions. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer more. I would defer to those gentlemen.
Do we have any questions for staff?
With the position of deputy finance director, would this be a permanent position then? So instead of Rod, we'd have Rod's replacement and somebody else?
I guess I'll defer to him to kind of go over his plan there.
Retiring Rod earlier or something?
Ms. Fisher, just... I can, I can probably address that real quickly. At this stage, the answer is yes. Now, as we look into the future and we look at the organization, it's not, it's always possible at some point that, not knowing the circumstances, that we say no, but at this point, I would say consider it as if it would be a permanent type position. I don't know that it'd be very good to publicly start talking about retirement.
Right.
Right. I, I think just for kind of the benefit of all of us up here, and then also people that may be in the audience that are, that are paying attention to this, I think it'd be helpful to just get a brief overview from each department head that, that is going to be affected by this, to just kind of explain sort of, as an example, with the police department, how the, how the sergeants versus the lieutenants thing works, and the major benefits of that, and then also what the transition looks like.
Sure, I'll turn it over to the experts.
Okay. Thank you.
The biggest thing as far as the lieutenants go when I got here was there are 11 lieutenants and no sergeant. So literally, when you're an officer, you could come in one day and be lieutenant. That's quite an extensive jump to go from being an officer to a command-level position, and I actually never heard of that before, as far as, over my course of 29 years, that much of a gap between rank. That happened, I think, back in 1995. It took quite a while to figure out when that happened, but, you know, what happened then, happened then, we can't change that. But I personally believe we need much more street-level supervision, and that's what sergeants do. They, they own a squad of officers, five to six officers, each two sergeants per shift. They're out in the streets a lot more than your lieutenant level would be. Reducing the lieutenant position from 11 positions to, down to three, where the three lieutenants would just be on patrol, and then those eight positions would be, would be sergeants over time, in addition to two others that were in other positions like training and such. I think it makes for a lot better, if you look at the chain of command, it makes a lot more sense. There's a lot more ownership as far as who owns, I don't mean owns, but who supervises which folks. Sergeant supervises officers, lieutenant supervises sergeant, captain supervises lieutenant. Three divisions also presently, we have, we have three divisions, and we only have one division commander. That struck me as being very odd, too. And when I say division commander, I mean a captain. This plan that I'm, hopefully you'll accept, is that we'll have a division commander over each division, so three captains.
Now, and so as far as, I mean, in understanding the, the, sort of the chain of command or so on, that it makes it a lot more logical, to me at least, that, that it's more understandable. What would the public, what should they hope to expect? Will there be any results that they may not see directly, but maybe in, in terms of better policing, more community-oriented type policing? Anything? If you understand kind of what I'm getting at, what, what might there be result-wise from this?
Yeah, and I do believe that's coming. That takes time. We're already doing some community-related policing, but I think when you have actually a sergeant over five officers as opposed to a lieutenant over 12 or 13, you're much able, much more able to do that, those type of activities, and I'm talking the, the community policing that you speak of, being out there more. You'll see more supervisors out and about as opposed to one lieutenant. You'll be seeing patrol sergeants, you're pushing down the supervision, but yes, they'll be out there more, and each sergeant will be responsible for more community policing type activities because they do, they're responsible for those five or six officers. It's just easier to do.
Okay.
So you will see that over time.
Okay. And so when you speak of, of a higher level of ownership, that's kind of what I, what I also see, that they, that they do kind of have that, it's more of a personal type.
Yes. It's been, I mean, really nationwide, this is how it's done. I mean, I, we had something similar to this for 21 years where I came from, and I can, it's, it works. I've seen it work, and it does work.
Right. Well, I appreciate you identifying that and then taking action, too, to make sure that we have the opportunity to, to help facilitate these changes.
Appreciate it.
Do we have any other questions for staff? Thank you.
Thank you.
Just have a quick question on the community engagement. Personally, I assume just, just as far as how that, how that falls in the organizational chart. Yeah, let me speak a little bit to it as well, because that, rather than sort of shifting people around, that's a new position with new responsibilities. One of the things that the, is the city commission you put in a strategic plan is for us to be able to better engage your residents and our citizenry. We're like a lot of communities where you've got a, maybe a small amount of people who like to get involved in a lot of things, but you have a whole lot of people that unless there's a big thing going on, they really don't get that involved, and I think that's fairly typical, and people are busy, and it's understandable. But every once in a while, you make pretty important decisions, and, and when you do that, it's kind of nice to try to get a feel for what people really think, and a lot of that's context, a lot of it's ongoing communication and so forth. We have a comprehensive plan that talks about trying to divide up the community and focus on some neighborhoods, and, and that means being las on to various departments about things that are going on in a neighborhood, and how we can make that neighborhood more cohesive and stronger. We, at this point, we're not really staff to take advantage of some of the technologies that are out there to go after those and engage those who utilize those technologies, and we're fine, and, you know, on, as, as time goes on, it's, it's a lot of young folks, but it's not just the youngest folks, the teenagers, the 20s, it's other folks that adapt to these tools as well. So, so we're looking for an opportunity to really do all those things, and what this person would do, they, they would help us do that. And we're, we're talking about where it fits. One of the options we're looking at is, we're looking at human relations and thinking about it from the perspective of the community relations aspect as well. I think it really makes sense, it complements, and it can really give us a lot of contact and benefit. But we're still talking through the actual home of where the person is, but the things that I mentioned before are all the types of responsibilities that that person would have to try to link us as an organization up to the, the people in our community, and hopefully be able to bring back, at times at least, engage them and bring back information to you that you can synthesize, and it helps you in your decision-making.
I'm, are, do you have something else?
I'm just, I'm real excited, I guess I would say, happy to see a coordinator working with the population, because to me, communication is what it's all about, and when I attended the workshops that we put on or tried to put on to get community input, and there were only, you know, 14 or 15 people there, that told me we needed to get out two people, because we're not obviously bringing them to us. So I'd like to see us get back to a neighborhood concept some way and have point people in the different neighborhoods throughout Salina. We've got to get communication going so we know how, what people really want their city government to do. So I'm, I'm real happy with this situation. I think this will work real good.
Yeah, I think this, I think this gives some neighborhood groups a person to go to that is specifically focused on those types of things.
Yeah. And maybe we can do some branding of some neighborhoods, or some way to identify different neighborhoods and, and the people in those neighborhoods, and, and give them some voice, you know, in what we're doing.
And I think that community development is already working on some of those things, but it also helps to have someone that the citizens can engage with that kind of helps to kind of quarterback a lot of those activities.
I'm, I'm kind of excited about it, and I'd certainly be willing to help.
Would we also be talking about an investment in software, either say to upgrade our website or some other tool that might fall into the citizen engagement realm?
Yeah, I think at some point we will. We would need to bring that person onboard, make sure they're competent with all those kind of current technologies that are out there. I think we need to look, if you look at our website, we can certainly look at others. We don't even use the full potential of ours, there's different modules that we can get as well. But I think the question, the real, the real issue is, is what is out there and what's most effective to, to engage people, to allow them to communicate with each other, and to bring back information to you as a commission that you can utilize and say, oh, this, this gives me some indication, I can kind of rely on this. And, and different tools do different things. Twitter is a good way to get a quick piece of information out and possibly bring them back into information on the webpage, and really, our webpage we need to enhance and put as much information and as much interactive services, as many interactive services as we possibly can, because that's where the value's found for most people, is, can I pay this? Can I observe that? You do that, then you expose folks to your other information, because they don't often go there to, to find it. Facebook is an interesting tool, it really is a good tool to get stuff out, possibly bring them back, but allow people to have their own conversation. And there's, there's other technologies out there to ask people some important questions, give them information, ask them questions, see what they think, bring that back. So we really want to look at them all and see what are, where best bang for a buck, but I would, I would say yes, in the future, at some point, we may be coming back saying, here's some dollars we need to spend on this technology or that technology. I think that should be anticipated.
See, I, I think that if we go out and hire this person, we may be saying, okay, you're going to be, we're expecting a lot from this position, but we're only going to allow you to use one hand to do it. If we don't provide, you know, the, let's say, the web possibilities. I go on our website, and it's, it's hard for me to find anything, and, and sometimes what I'm looking for is three years old, and that, that shouldn't be. That's not helpful to people, and so then I go on the Manhattan's website, and it's, you know, you can find anything you want. And it's all based on the, the, the way that that particular web-based program approaches citizen engagement. And so I think that in order to get, to be fully effective, we have to, to be able to provide tools, you know, this, this person won't be able to, you know, send out mass emails, or, or what, I don't know how, how we're... what, I don't know how, how we're expecting this position to, to evolve, but I have a feeling that, you know, all the basic materials that we have that might be interesting to people aren't readily available, aren't readily accessible.
Yeah, they may not be. I, I think it depends what you're looking for. If you want to sign up for a part program, you can do that, that's pretty popular. Certain things you can't do. I think in the end, kind of like with every service we have, you can, you can look at the highest level, you can look at the lowest level, and you can look in between, and it depends how much you want to invest in that. And so we'll be, we'll bring many options probably as we evaluate those tools.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, I think it's, there's a lot of tools that are out there. I mean, and I agree, I mean, but software is almost, for that kind of thing, isn't a real expensive prospect, so I don't know that we need to concern ourselves with that. I think just the free stuff, the Twitter, the, the Facebook, the reutilizing fully our website, which we haven't because we don't have a person dedicated to doing this job. We probably have a lot of tools already here that we aren't using, that'll be a darn good start to let somebody ease into it. And of course, we're hoping that the person that you'll hire will be somebody who's going to bring that to the table. That'll be part of the hiring process, when they come and give you a bunch of good ideas and you say, that's the person for the job.
Absolutely. There's really a couple of aspects. One is the creativity in, in, in how you get people interested. You can go on a lot of those, needless any city in Kansas, it doesn't matter what it is, the city you think is the most proactive, and I'll tell you, their response to some of the social media is very low percentage-wise.
Exactly.
And a lot of those folks are not even living within the community, which is fine that they want to be a part of it, I'm just saying, as a percent, when you see that, that is a broader universe. We want to be creative, and we, I want to out, I want to outdo those, because I think we're going to have to be hired to be effective, so we want to get people involved. And the other thing is, is we really are going to rely on that person to figure out those best tools and, and you know, what's going to help us do this and what's going to help us do that. So it all starts with a strategy of engagement, and then you focus on the tools, and then we can evaluate those tools. But yeah, there'll be a cost of some tools at some point, I can pretty much predict that, we'll just have to see what they are.
And, and there may be some people that we'll never reach, but, but we have to make that, because government has always worked well, but it doesn't mean that it can't be improved upon and, and get more people involved in the process. I mean, I think it's all about communication and...
Right. And I think it'll help us do things more efficiently if we kind of know what, if more people are able to contribute to the process at their convenience. And, and then we know what kind of they want through that engagement. I think it makes everything work more efficiently. And it makes our jobs, all of our jobs, easier, I believe. So, one thing I did want to mention that, that I didn't earlier when Chief Nelson was up here, that is, is that I think one of the benefits of, of the restructuring of the, with the street sergeants, is that I think it gives a more clear career path for people that may be interested in a, in a career in law enforcement. So, I think, I think that that's also a big, a big part of that as well. And also, so I might throw a plug out, is that I, I know that you're always looking for recruits. And so I think that maybe if there's a more clear career path, that maybe we'll be able to encourage and attract more people into law enforcement local.
And maybe some of those officers will be able to communicate better on street level with, if we can get some neighborhood input and, and get some of the neighbors, some people involved in the neighborhoods and get to know the officers that serve them. So, it's a good idea.
Any other comments? Any public comment on this matter? Very good. I'd bring that back to the commission.
Madam Mayor, I'd move that we adopt resolution number 14-7080 and authorize the city manager to amend the City of Salina Pay Plan to include employee classifications as proposed.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. That motion carries, 5-0. Move on to development business.
Item 8.1, resolution number 14-7081, expressing support for the construction of additional multifamily apartment units at the Heritage at Hawthorne Village located at 715 North 9th Street.
Mr. Andrew.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This is a request that comes to you from the Overland Property Group. And as we pointed out, they have developed affordable housing projects in a number of states. The list we had was Missouri, Kansas, and Colorado. They also have properties in Iowa and Texas as well. But they developed the 96-unit reserves at Prairie Glen Apartment Complex on South Ohio. But they were encouraged by the Kansas Housing Resources Corporation to look for a site that was in Salina's neighborhood revitalization area for their next project. So in 2010, they zeroed in on the Hawthorne School property, and they came before the city commission on October 4th, 2010, and asked for a resolution of support for Phase 1 of their project, which was construction of 32 units of income qualified rental housing for individuals and families on the former Hawthorne School site. And so these two buildings here in the clubhouse represent Phase 1 of that. At that time, in October 2010, the city commission left open the option of either building renovation or new construction. An analysis of the existing school was completed, determined that it was not feasible to reuse or redevelop the existing school property. So they went through the review process with the Heritage Commission, the city commission, and ultimately, their request for demolition was approved, a planned development district zoning was approved. And so after final commission action in February 2011, they completed the purchase of the school property, they removed the school building, and they have constructed these two buildings here. The request that is before you today is for a resolution of support for federal low and moderate income tax credits to help finance construction of Phase 2. After our report went out and was shared with Overland Property Group and the resolution as well, they contacted city staff back and indicated to us that they had had internal discussions about trying to seek financing for up to 24 units instead of 16. And so everything that you see in the report and in the attached resolution 14-7081 makes reference to 16 additional apartment units. John, you've got the plan that shows a possible change to that with the 24 units. That would be under your site plans there, Phase 2, 24-plex.
Yeah, and that shows the 24-unit...
So, they have retained the services of Jones Gillum Architects for their first phase of their project, and is working with Jones Gillum on a second phase. This is just a illustration of how they could convert the rear building from two stories to three, to go from 16 to 24 units, and how they would provide parking for that. We wanted to point out several things about the resolution that is attached. As I noted, staff drafted this based on the understanding that they were looking to do 16 additional units. If you were favorably disposed to giving them some flexibility to go from 16 to 24, then paragraph 1 would need to be amended to indicate 16 to 24 additional units. And paragraph 2 would also need to be amended to indicate 16 to 24 apartment units. And then I wanted to point out that this is a resolution format that's been standardized by the Kansas Housing Resource Corporation, but we've modified it to make clear two things that when you are indicating support for whatever number of units you're comfortable with, this project is still going to be subject to receiving any final zoning, site plan, or building permit approvals. And also, this is a, if you don't approve this from a zoning or regulatory standpoint, then the resolution becomes null and void. So, the state of Kansas has had a requirement for some time, is that they don't want to entertain or spend time on applications from communities if there's not community support for the project. So as part of the application process, they require a resolution from the local governing body indicating your support for the project. And so your options this afternoon would be to approve the resolution of support for whatever number of additional units you're comfortable with. You could postpone consideration today if you'd like additional information about the project, or you could decline to approve the resolution of support for using tax credits at this location. Jeff Gillum, architect, is here representing Overland Property Group if you have any questions of him, but I would stand for any questions you have about this property or the program.
I had a question about, and it doesn't matter, I guess, if it's 16 or 24, probably affects it some, but not too much. Where the new parking is there on the northwest corner? That is the storm water runoff collection point. What, what's going to be done with the storm water if that's taken off of there?
Plan is to eliminate the surface storm water detention basin, create an underground storage, and also to use a permeable pavement in that location. But the plan is to move the detention storage capacity to a chamber underneath the parking lot.
And have we done that somewhere in town before, or would this be?
We do have some locations where we have underground detention. The Hong Kong Buffet out on South 9th Street does not have a surface detention pond, they have underground detention. And there's a couple other locations. Some locations are better suited for that, but the, the three things that we identified going from 16 to 24 units was making sure that we had adequate parking for the additional eight housing units, and also making sure that that didn't change the density to something that was out of character with the R2.5 designation, and it, it does not. And what Mr. Gillum has done is just shown that what would occur is that the building would be shortened slightly, would go from two to three stories, and then 12 additional parking spaces could be added in this location. But you are correct, this is a green space with detention, and that would have to be converted to underground storage. And again, that's why we, we pointed out that a resolution of support for the use of tax credits does not constitute an approval of their plans and all the detail that would have to come back to you for your final approval as it relates to the planned development district.
So would there be some variances on some of the height restrictions, or anything?
Not that we have, not that we've identified preliminarily. Their density, their height, their parking, they have shown how that could be addressed, but they would have to formally amend the planned development district to go from 16 to 24, and that would go back before the planning commission and you before, for final approval before that occurred.
Okay. Would, this would be a question for Mr. Bankston. Would, would our approving a resolution going from 16 to 24, would that have any, I mean, even though it is contingent upon getting the approvals from the planning commission, would, would our decision here in any way seem to be a, a view of our, our willingness to, to accept a variance in some way? Would, if you understand kind of what I'm getting at there?
No, I do, I think so. And frankly, from Mr. Andrews' background, he may be able to answer that better than I. From a, from a standpoint of any presidential aspect, I assume it needs to refer to a specific number of, some number. Is that fair to say?
That is correct. And what, what number the community is willing to support in that location. And when I shared this resolution with representatives of Overland Property Group, unbeknownst to staff, they were actually, because of the response to their first phase, they were thinking of, of going to 24 in this phase. And so I guess the question for Mr. Bankston is, is the language that the, this is subject to project receiving final zoning and site plan approval and all other required regulatory approvals. I don't think that you are necessarily prejudging the details of this, because if you are supportive of the use of this financing tool, this is still going to come back to you for your final regulatory approval, and, and that's where the actual details of detention, parking, height, density, all of that will be addressed in detail.
Yeah, Commissioners, just to reference what Dean said, if you just go to your resolution, section 1, that's where it has the language, where it says, "subject to the zoning and site plan approval" and all of that. So, it's in there, it's all contingent upon that. So you're not, you're not bound in any way. Nor, nor would we bring, if we thought that you would be, we wouldn't bring that question to you, because you're not supposed to predetermine that anyway. So...
Well, okay. I just want to make sure that us saying, oh yeah, you know, make it work, you know, it's, we're not saying whatever it takes, we're just saying...
Yeah. I think that if they come back and, for whatever reason, they're not able to do that number, same number of units, or whatever the site issue might be, if it's a number of units, maybe it affects the quantity of tax credits, I assume it would, and they just have to go back and, you know, decide if they want a project, see if they can amend it at the state level, but we still have the ability to apply our local requirements, and they would need to meet those. It doesn't mean there isn't a variance. At some point, they, I don't, I'm not anticipating what that would be yet, but on any project, someone would ask for a variance, and the city has a process to consider it, but...
Commissioners, if I may, Jeff Gillum, good afternoon. You know, one of the reasons they're really looking at the 24 units is it's been a very successful project. The state has identified a real need. It is in North Salina where we're trying to encourage some development, so we really think it's a win-win situation. You know, some of the, the parameters, whether they go 16, 24, will also be with the state of Kansas with regards to their funding. So they, they have submitted and would like to do the 24 units. As Jason pointed out, yes, we understand that we will have to meet PDD requirements come before you in planning and all that. We don't anticipate any variances or anything at this time, so if that helps.
No, that's great. I, I kind of like the fact you guys are going vertical. I, I think, as you mentioned, it is a need, it is infill, it is, it is in the area of change. It's, there's a lot of positives to it, so, yes.
I'm certainly in support of it. And I know there's a lot of young tenants that I'm familiar with that are living out there and are really happy with it, so I'm supportive of the resolution.
It's been nice to see some activity and some growth there, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Just, just one question I have, or just even not so much a question as a comment. The question would be that this is kind of a, it said in the, in the blue sheet here that this, that the resolution was patterned after something that was kind of suggested by, by the, by the state. Is that because...
Yes, the format of this, we've had multiple projects that have come out of the City of Salina that have gone to the Kansas Housing Resource Corporation, and they have sent this out to communities, saying these are the, it is primarily the, the whereas's, where they, they want identified the number of units, the, the general location, what amenities that the project will be adding, what census tract that's in, because those are all taken into part of their consideration. But there was a, and it was seven or eight years ago, there was a case where the Kansas Housing Resource Corporation awarded tax credits for a project in Manhattan, and then the city commission ended up denying the zoning and annexation for that project, so they introduced the resolution of support as part of that upfront, because they didn't want to be in a situation where they had awarded credits to a community for a project that didn't have community support.
And then on the first, on the first phase of this, I assume had the same, probably the same resolution?
Yes, almost.
Was it? Because I drove up there today and I didn't see a playground up there. Was that not part of Phase 1?
The playground was not part of Phase 1, but there is, there is a playground area that is planned to be in, in behind in this area here. The other thing that the state took note of is the proximity to the city spray park, which is right next door, which, which they viewed as a... which is right next door, which they viewed as a positive in terms of this location.
And did they ever provide access to that other than going around the ends?
That has not been done, but it was discussed that as part of phase two, there could possibly be this, some of these sidewalks and things are not finalized, but there was possibility of tying this sidewalk here and creating an opening where that fence is solid there. But it was always understood that there was going to be a phase two, but the timing of that was going to be dependent on what the market response was to phase one.
Okay, because I think that would be a great benefit to the kids that live in these apartments and be able to access that easily.
Dean, a quick question. Is that fence, was that part of the dedication to the city of that Park and School District?
What occurred was that the developer who was, originally took this property front was approved by the school district as the approved redeveloper for Hawthorne School and converted it to offices. He requested that as a condition of the sale, that the school district erect that fence to have a separation between the spray grounds and his office part. So the school district actually put that fence up, because they were the owners of the property at the time, and we kind of inherited the fence, so it's really ours to do with what we wish to do with it.
Okay, and that's what I thought. And the reason I bring that up is because we can put the opening in the fence, we don't have to wait for a phase two. So that was something that was discussed before, I think maybe in transition, we lost that. But if we can make a note, we can easily figure out how to put an opening in there, and that way those folks in the first phase have direct access, don't have to walk clear around the fence.
Yeah, I think, I think that'd probably be a great benefit to the Overland Group too as well, I guess.
Yes, that was discussed in phase one, but not all the things on the master plan were done in phase one, with the understanding that there was going to be changes when phase two occurred.
Right. And I just, just as a comment on the third whereas in the resolution, it states whereas the project would provide affordable housing in census tract number two, which is in need of additional rental housing. And I'd just kind of like to just make the comment that there is 51% roughly rental housing up there already, and a lot of it is affordable, but what's really nice is that this is good quality, safe rental housing. So it kind of fits within there.
If you'd like to insert the word quality or something there, you're certainly free to do that.
Well, if we're already inserting 24 instead of 16, I think that, I think that I would. Just to, just to suggest that there's already quite a bit of rental housing up there, and one of our goals is to, is always more owner-occupied housing, but the fact that we don't have a lot of good quality rental stock up there that's safe and new and everything else, I think is, I think it's a great benefit to that neighborhood.
So as I, again, it's a discretionary item for you, but what, if you were supportive of the 24, then for the benefit of the city clerk, that in the first paragraph, it would say 16 to 24 additional affordable rental housing units, and the second paragraph, it would say 16 to 24 apartment units, because again, we don't know what the state would ultimately approve. And then the addition of the word, you were suggesting, "need of additional quality residential housing," that would be in paragraph three.
Any other questions or comments from staff? Or staff? Got all that noted?
I will write this up, or mark this up and get it to the city clerk, so she can modify the resolution with whatever action you would take.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Andrew. Is there any public comment on this item?
Good afternoon, commissioners. Ray Ruska, 235 North Santa Fe. I think this is a great development for the north end, north end of Salina, to bring some low-income housing. I had a few questions about the tax credits application. Now, is that, these tax credits, are they supplied by the state of Kansas? Or are they supplied by the governing body of Salina?
I can, I think I can answer that question. The Kansas Housing Resources Corporation would be the one that was supplying the tax credits through the state of Kansas, not City of Salina.
Right.
And do we know how much that's going to, how much, the amount of that is?
No, and the tax credits actually vary upon the sale of those tax credits. They could run anywhere from 60 cents per dollar to 90-some cents per dollar. It just varies on an annual sale.
So is there some kind of an average there? You kind of know in the past of what they've provided before?
Dean, do you know of an average, I would say, in the 80s to 90s? High 80s.
Can you provide any, any examples of the tax credits that you've supplied in the past to?
Reserves of Prairie Glen. You also have two units with this project. There are others around the community, yes.
And those were about 90%, I guess, is what you're saying.
They were in the 90% range, yes.
And did you have a number on that at all?
No, I don't, from the top of my head, no, I can't tell you that.
You want to wag it?
No, sir, I don't want to do that either, thank you.
I had another kind of a, an issue here about the namesake of the Lee District has been, you know, of course, Mike Forstall is here, he owns this property, and has been denied tax credit application from the city. What is the position of the city?
Okay, this doesn't, this-
On low-income housing tax credits for the housing and Lee Building District.
This doesn't go directly with what we're talking about right now.
Well, this does.
If you want to follow up, not on what we're voting on with Hawthorne. No, it does not.
Yes, it does, because if you're going to develop in one place, why aren't you developing another one?
So why don't you ask that question after we vote on this? Because that has nothing to do with what we're voting on at hand right now.
I think you're incorrect on that.
I could, I could see relevance. I could see some relevancy, that we are discussing the possibility of supporting this. I could maybe see where Mr. Ruska may have a point here that at least is worth hearing what his point is on this, I think. Because I think you're asking about the general acceptiveness of this property.
Well, we've got a property in the north end that you're willing to develop and get tax credits for, but we've got a property in the downtown area that you're not willing to provide tax credits for, because it requires a letter from, or an approval like this from the City of Salina's commission to direct the city manager to write that credit, or that information.
So to keep it kind of in the scope of maybe, I'm just, the only reason I'm kind of supporting this is I can kind of see, maybe in my own twisted head.
Which I don't have a problem with after this particular item.
Well, but I think before we vote, we probably ought to at least think about this. I, let me just be clear to make sure that we are kind of in what I would consider a similar area. As we look at this project's potential support for this, you're kind of saying, have we looked at other projects? I mean, is that kind of where you're going with this question? I mean?
Well, I know that this question has been brought up before in front of the city manager, maybe not the commission, but I would like to see, or I would ask, that the city commissioners, now that they're aware of this, look at the Lee Building for low-income housing in the downtown area. Now, that's not a hard concept to buy into, because that would develop businesses in the area that there's some blight in.
Well, number one, that's all opinion. Second, but probably more to the point, this resolution here is looking at gauging whether this governing body supports the Overland Group or any other group that's willing to undertake the venture that they're doing to obtain financing from the Kansas Housing Resources Corporation.
I understand that, Mr. Blanchard. I understand that fully.
Let me just finish. So I think that if you want to make an apples-to-apples comparison, then I would suggest that anybody that might be interested in that kind of activity, go about maybe the same, the same process.
Isn't the Overland Property Group, and I guess, what is his, what is his name? I don't recall for sure.
The architect, you mean, or?
Yeah, he represents the Overland Property Group. Yeah, and he, he's- Well, I'm just making a comment here about the Overland Property Group. They have filed a housing tax credit application, so what you're saying is that this process needs to go through, if we decide to develop the Lee District, the namesake of that area in downtown, it needs to go through a developer similar to Overland Property Group.
I really, you know what, I really don't want to entertain this conversation, because it's really not germane to this particular item on our agenda. My suggestion that the, this, the action that we're taking, the Overland Property Group, has gone to the state, and the state is making this request for a resolution that says, basically that, you know, they've kind of gone through a process that has determined that the city would be in favor of them receiving these, or the city would be in favor of this project here, and that it's consistent with, and I think our vote here would be, is it consistent with what our vision for that particular area is?
Commissioners, just real quick, one thing I think that needs to be stated is that the city has never received a request, a formal request.
Right.
And there's not been an application filed with the state for tax credits for any other property, and I think since, since this first phase of this one. So if, if we have that, certainly you would look at, you'd look at the layout, you'd look at the development concept and so forth. Obviously, you did that with the first phase of this one, and at that point, you could apply whatever would be your policy guidance individually and as a group to that project. But we have not, it's not factually correct to say that the city has denied anything with regards to another project.
And my purpose of hearing Mr. Ruska, that was simply sort of a what-if, is this the only one we would consider? And that's the only direction I really wanted to take those comments, and I thought it was maybe only relevant in the sense that would we consider other things? And I think the answer is yes, we would had the Lee District had a state filed form and brought it before us. I'm sure we would look at it on its merit and its funding, and it's, you know, all of the things that we'll look at with this, if it fits the neighborhood, on and on, so.
Following procedure.
Yeah, I mean, same thing. I don't think, yeah, I think you're right to say that we've never denied any, anything to it, and your information that tells us nothing's ever been filed, I think only reinforces that we obviously can't deny something that's never been in front of us, so.
Well, I think this is, Mr. Ruska should bring this under, up under Citizens Forum at the beginning, as the mayor said, because this doesn't relate right now to what we're talking about.
Well, I understand that.
You could bring this up, you know, next week, under Citizens Forum.
Ms. Crawford, I have actually accomplished what I have set out to do, is bring this to the attention of the city commission and those people in our community that are wanting some of this development to happen downtown too, other than just in the north end. So thank you for your help.
Thank you, Ray.
My name is Mike Forstall. I own the Lee Buildings, I'm sure you're all aware of it, and I have to say I'm sorry. Okay, so we all understand what that's for. I would like to fill you in on your resolution.
What was that you said? I didn't?
I would like to say I'm sorry. I didn't entertain Mr. Ruska to do that, but that's fine, I just wanted to let you know. Yes, there has never been an application for the Lee Building for low-income housing tax credits. The developer had talked to Salina Downtown Incorporated, they had multiple meetings with the city and with the Chamber of Commerce, and they were informed that the city would only support the Lee Building in a 60-40 split. 60% low-income housing, 40% affordable housing, or excuse me, market rent housing. So that developer pulled that $15 million contract to develop that building. Now, your tax credits, folks, those are federal tax credits. The housing authority, the housing tax authority in Topeka only administer those federal tax credits. They are 3% of the construction costs for the next 30 years, which equate 90% of those construction costs. Now, the city does not put any money in those, those are solely federal tax credits that are administered and passed on through advisement from their board as to who to accept. They, like everybody else, have acceptable developers that they deal with. It is tough to get on their list. Why that's discriminatory, I don't know. Those tax credits are bonded, and that is how a project is built most of the time, through those bonds. Now, the resolution that you have, the Overland Group cannot get those tax credits until they get the resolution first. That resolution does not come from the state. That is a standard form that the state office requires to be submitted. All they can do is get on a list to find out whether there are tax credits available. They then bring the resolution that the city either agrees, usually agrees with and gives to them, and it sends it with their application, and then their application is presented to their board, and they have multiple projects, and then the board picks projects based on need for area, population, and based on developer doing the project. So the city applies no tax credits, applies no money to these, these are all federal monies. So to support a building such as this or any building, really doesn't cost the city anything other than increase the number of affordable units. And as I know, yes, this is probably worthwhile for our city. We need more affordable housing. Every affordable housing project in Salina is full and has a waiting list. Dennis Collier is a friend of mine, he is full. So every market rent apartment is full. So if we want to correct our 4.3% unemployment rate and get more people here, we have to get more housing. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment regarding this resolution? If not, I'd bring it back to the commission.
You wrote some notes, didn't you, John?
I did write notes. Give me a minute here unless someone else makes a motion. I'd be happy.
The notes that I had written down was, the request from Overland Property Group was to amend paragraph one to show development of 16 to 24 additional affordable rental housing units, to amend paragraph two to indicate that 16 to 24 apartment units are proposed in phase two, and then Commissioner Blanchard had a suggestion of adding the word "quality" between additional and rental housing in paragraph three.
Good job, Mr. Andrew.
Okay. Madam Mayor, I move that we approve of the resolution of support, resolution 14-7081, supporting the issuance of housing track tax credits for 16 to 24 additional multifamily apartment units at the Heritage at Hawthorne Village, with the resolution amended paragraph one, adding 16 to 24 units, amending paragraph two, with also the 16 to 24 for the apartment units, and paragraph three inserting "quality" between additional and rental.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries 5-0. I'd like to move on to other business.
I've got three, three small things I want to look at. One thing is, I know last year at some point, we talked about that MDA, fill the boot, and I wanted to see about bringing that maybe before us again and getting some final, it seems like it was relatively supportive last year from that, but maybe getting together and trying to come up with an ordinance that works for us, whether we, you know, work through the details, if it's going to be on duty, off duty, in-street, boot, you know. I want to bring that back before us, I think it's important to the firemen, and it seems to be pretty supportive. That's the first thing. The second, oh, sorry, do you want to do that?
Can I hit that real quick? Yeah, that's on our list of things. Yeah, that's on our list of things to do.
Okay.
And so we'll, we'll try to get that in front of you. Plenty of time ahead of the actual MDA activities. I will say, though, it's going to affect every employee, not just the firemen. Just clearly, it'll have to, in fairness.
Sure, sure, of course.
But we'll hit both the, the employee aspect, the time aspect, the resource aspect, and also the right-of-way activity aspect. I think those are the key issues.
Sure, sure.
But yeah, it's, it's, we're, we're working on that for you.
Okay, good. Second thing, of course, near and dear to my heart, and it seems like it's happening more and more often. I know Blanchard and I went up to a, to a breakfast the other day and within like a three-block area of North Ninth Street, there were 10 cars parked in the yard. How, how, how was the law enforcement doing that? If you could give back to me on that, does not have to be a detailed report, but if we could make sure that we're doing that. And then, you know, we did a lot of work last year and the year before, getting our minimum maintenance code up. And I know our city staff is pretty busy, probably very difficult for them to get to those so-desired things that I have, such as people mowing their lawns and on and on, snow removal, things like that.
Shoveling their sidewalks, yes.
Shoveling sidewalks. And I know we just brought on potentially three new employees today, but I would look to see if there is maybe some way to fund a full-time, until we can get our city under control with all of the violations, a, you know, a code enforcement, just a dedicated, strict code enforcement officer who does nothing but drives around all day long and is a thorn in people's side until they clean up their property. We talk a lot about entryway signs and spend a lot of money on entryway signs. My concern is, and I know we're talking about North Ninth, and I want entryway signs as much as anybody, but it seems kind of counterproductive to put an entryway sign and then people drive in and the first thing they see is code violation after code violation after code violation. I want to make sure that we're not getting the, the cart before the, the horse, so to speak. Like I said, I do want to see those entryway signs. I think they're important, but I really think we've got to do something. It just seems like it's almost epidemic, how, how many cars are in the yards and how many nuisance violations and things I see just driving around town on a, on a daily basis, you know? And I know some of these lots are difficult for cars to park on, but that's how we set real estate values. You know, if you've got a lot that's not designed for 15 cars, you probably ought to look at a house that is, you know? But those are just things that have been really of concern to me personally, and, and it doesn't seem like a whole lot's getting done yet. And I know it's all new, but I just want to make sure that we don't sort of pass these things and just sort of shelve them. You know, I want to make sure that we're moving forward with them too. So I think it's a real benefit to our cities.
Gary, what number of code enforcement officers do we have? We have one full-time, I know is dedicated, but beyond that.
Yes, we have one full-time person, and we have one person who works part-time in code enforcement, as well as picking up some of the building inspections, footing foundations and finals for residential construction.
Would having another one help you, or what, what can we do to sort of get these, these-
Short answer is, yes. Staffing in any function would help.
It's only money. I know what you're saying. It's only money.
Yeah, that's the question that comes back to you, is, is, I'm going to, I'm going to guesstimate, and you can nod your head, that a salary and benefits, you're probably looking at about $50,000 to $55,000.
You're exactly right.
Somewhere in there.
Yeah, I'm thinking we could hire somebody with a car, working for $10 an hour, who'd probably drive around town and do that kind of thing and document that. I don't think we need a college-educated person to drive around and say, hey, this lawn's too tall. I'm looking for the guy that's willing to work for 12, 12 bucks an hour. Maybe there's something else, I don't know.
But right now, we don't do that because it's generally a complaint-driven system.
We're about a 50-50 process right now between complaints and call-in. And so our staff are out whenever they're traveling around the community, finding those, those residences. We completed a little over 9,000 inspections this last year on those, basically two full-time staff people, working on different violations within the community. So, you know, our leader this last year was trash and debris with over 3,500 inspections, and we had a little over 2,700 weed overgrowth and grass issues. So we sent out almost 2,000 violation notices this last year. So I, I can't say we're, we're able to track it much better than we have in the past.
I think that, I think there might be technology solutions to some of the reporting and being able to, using GIS and some other technologies to identify delinquent or whatever properties that are out of compliance. So I think that there are a number of things that we might be able to do to help enhance. I think eventually, though, probably will require staff, staffing.
Well, I just know it's two of the biggest complaints I hear is our roads, which obviously we're taking good care of. We've made the efforts to raise the mill levy to try and fix that, and, and just the general appearance of, of the city. One thing John mentioned, and I, I know you've looked at some other programs, just something I came across on a cursory search was something called My District D. It's something that Clark County uses, and it's simply, and you've seen it before, it's a photo app. Somebody, it has a little introduction with the, with the mayor, tells you all the phone, phone calls to call, all of the good stuff, and then a reporting thing.
Our software module that we bought a year and a half ago has the exact same thing, a citizen report module, and they can GPS the actual location of where you're at, take the picture, and verify coordinates. But we will still have to go out and verify-
Sure, sure.
-our staff before we send a violation notice that, yes, the weeds are too tall, or yes, there is a car in the yard, or whatever the case may be, because we're the ones that go in and enforce it in the court systems, not the person that sends in the notice. So, yes, that software is available to us, and it's one of the modules we keep looking at as far as when are we going to go next. And our software company has been purchased by Cartograph, and so we're in a transition period. And it was our hope that we could have that up and running by the spring, but-
Maybe that new technology person can do it, or-
There you go.
... relations, that could be the first job. Jason, just, just cutting back to there, and I don't want to keep everybody too long. We actually finally have a short meeting here, and I'm sure everyone wants to get home. When we talk about the wages of what it could cost, I mean, and I, I kind of facetiously joke and say the $10 an hour, but I mean, I know that, you know, even $10 or $15 an hour is a pretty good job for somebody with benefits around here. I mean, is it unreasonable that we could find somebody to work for? I mean, I just does not, is there, are there some special aspects that pushes it up to the $50,000 range, or?
Well, well, the 50 includes benefits. Benefits, if you have full-time health insurance is, and all the others, probably about $20,000 of that. You're probably looking, if we look, and I don't have my pay plan in front of me, but I would say for a code enforcement officer, probably a range of about 20, 25 to 30, 35, and it all depends. Usually, I don't know that you have to hire the high-end, I'm just kind of speculating in the middle. But that's based on the responsibilities. We don't have a position per se that just says, go get the cars in the yards.
Yeah.
But you still have a regulatory, law enforcement regulatory role, so you don't want somebody who lacks common sense, because then the neighbors are hassled, you know? They could actually be ticketing folks who don't deserve to be ticketed, and then we get into a lot of issues with that.
Right on.
So whoever you have, you need to have someone who's completely, well, has, has some pretty strong knowledge and good judgment, who can take instructions. And there's a good chance you're not going to keep full-time busy with that one aspect, so you're going to get into other nuisance issues. And sometimes we think, well, weeds and grass are pretty easy, you know, the, the vehicles and operable vehicles are easy, junk and stuff on property, but there's a lot of judgments in some of that stuff, too. So I don't know, I haven't looked at it just for the yard, the cars in the yards, but if we truly just say, add another code enforcement officer, we need to pay them, or put them within the range, at least.
Of what they're doing.
Yeah, and it very well could be the, the lower end, the starting end, but of the other code enforcement officers. That's what we typically do.
Any thoughts on potentially retired law enforcement working part-time, or just any, anybody like that who maybe has experienced in some form of legal aspect that maybe wants to pick up a-
Yeah, that's, that's always great, to find somebody that's experienced. I think probably the first question that, that we need to look at, and there's, there's a couple of options here. If it's a seasonal thing, we can look at a, a part-time seasonal, not look at a full-time employee, and, you know, handle it over a five, six-month period where you have most growth. And it depends on what you're using them for. Again, if it's just the cars, or if we're talking about grass and other things. So that's something we could look at. That's a lower-cost option to try to hit it hard in a particular period of time, so you don't continue to add to the full-time staffing. Again, that's an option. Ultimately, in that, on adding staff and what you'd like, that, that decision in the end falls with the five of you and what a majority of you would like to do, but we, we do have options in there.
Sure, sure. Well, maybe the part-time, I mean, maybe narrow it in as to what you think might be most effective during those peak months, and maybe look at a part-time or, or something. Just, I mean, that just seems like it's almost epidemic.
Mr. Gage is very correct. If, if we're going to use somebody in that area, it is a property maintenance code, and that would be everything from trash and overgrowth to broken windows and siding and those type of things. And so we'd like to have somebody have some good general construction knowledge behind them to know that, what to fix up, how to fix it up, and a timeline that they can fix it up in.
Okay.
Pretty technical. It's a, it needs a technical person, as I remember the ordinance. It's not just somebody-
Exactly.
-that's parking in the wrong yard.
Sure. Remember the parking cars. We can tell them that they have 24 hours to get out of there, and they do. And we go back to inspect them, so.
And that's a law enforcement now ticket, right? Is that, that's-
Yes.
And what do you, we're always curious, how much is that ticket? Do we know? Is that off the top of our head? Is it $25 ticket, $35?
There's, it could be a court fine to go along with it.
Prison time.
So it could be very anywhere from 35 to 75.
Could be higher, yeah. It would be, it'd be beheading if it were up to me, but, yeah. Well, just some thoughts.
All right. Madam Mayor, I've got a, just a, I'll, I'll be real brief on this. I'd just like to, just to mention something. And, and part of it is, is Commissioner Hardy, Commissioner Crawford, myself, we're lucky enough to have Mr. Gage take us to Topeka on Wednesday for City Hall Day, which we met with State Senator Arpke and Representatives Dirks and Clayz. We appreciated their time. But kind of some of the stuff we talked about today with our community engagement officer, you know, I, I think those things, we, we look at solutions to where we can get the community engaged and find out what, what they need and how we can better govern the city of Salina. And one of the things that, that kind of seems to be a theme with the legislature is, is the legislator wanting to legislate how we govern the cities, which is, is particularly troublesome, and, and I think that we did an adequate job giving the, our representatives in the legislatures our ideas that we, we don't really need all the help that they're really wanting to give us. And then just today, in, in particular, House Bill 2227, they met today on that, and this is the House bill that deals with elections, local elections. Wednesday, they're going to take up the same bill, Senate Bill 211. So I hope that all of us, I know that I'm going to get busy on, on calling senators tomorrow and, and House people, depending on how this thing turned out today. But also for people at home, I think one of the things that kind of sticks in my mind, the, the idea, I believe, is to try to get more control in Topeka about what happens in our local elections here. And I think that we've seen by this session of the Kansas Legislature that we're probably a lot better off with people with local knowledge and, and all of us up here who study the issues locally to be able to make more informed and better decisions for our community, as opposed to those decisions being made in, in Topeka for us. So this, this bill, we feel, I feel, that our elections being held in the spring on off-years really is a benefit because people are informed. The turnout is low, but if the turnout, which is one of the reasons that they state for not wanting, or for wanting to move the elections out of the spring so that they'd get better turnout, but it seems like they do an awful lot of other things to kind of, to discourage turnout, that I don't think having an informed electorate, even if it's only 15 or 20%, is, is a bad thing. I'd rather have 15 or 20% of people that are really engaged, really know what's going on, and willing to go out and vote, do that, rather than people that just are, you know, there and say, well, that guy's name looks good and pull it. So I think that we don't give the, the local voters enough credit, that I think they are informed. I think they do make educated decisions when they do vote for school board and, and city commission races. So anyways, I would just encourage anybody that, that might agree with me to maybe call the legislatures and legislators and let them know that I think we ought to keep our elections the way they are. So thank you for-
Just to add to that, too, commissioners, there's, on the Senate side, and some of you that were able to sit in on that, just by chance we had time to sit in and listen to them, there were, I think, six or seven variations of that bill they were trying to, to work through and then deal conceptually with it. There's a bill on the House side, too, and sooner or later, one of those may very well pass on either side, come back to the other side, and who knows if it, what happens in the other House. But on the Senate side, one thing that was added that morning was, well, they, they pulled the, the partisan requirement that says, hey, you have to run for your local office as a Republican, a Democrat, Libertarian, or whatever it might be, which I think is good, because quite honestly, I think that would harm the, even most of the local governments in the state, but the council or what we call commission manager form, which is ironically, was based in the early progressive era on eliminating the negative aspects of the pure politics and, and the negative problems with that, to create a form of government that is as close as government can be, resembles the private business model with the, kind of the CEO, city manager, and then the Board of Directors, city commission. It was intended to eliminate the graft, the corruption, the true extreme negative of politics. But it's ironic that there's a push to bring politics back into local government, and for our form, all but destroyed, in my opinion. And I'm, I'm biased, because I, I work in this form, but, but clearly, that form and structure is there for a reason, and this is counter to the reason. Well, our own Senator Arpke did, in that committee meeting, make a motion to strike that out, and they did do that conceptually. Now, we'll see what the final, final version is, but at this point, it looks like that's out. So very appreciative he represented our, our thoughts real well. A different senator, though, added a, a strange requirement that if any of you should not serve your full term, perhaps you move out of the community, whatever that reason might be, that today, you would create for yourself a process for selecting somebody. It could be very formal, it could be very informal. It's up to you to finish out, that person would finish out the term until an election is held. What is currently on the Senate side would say that you can't do that anymore. In fact, you've got to find out what the political party is of the person who's on your commission, who, by the way, didn't run by political party. And, and you go back to the precinct folks that represent the same party, and they get to tell you who's going to be represented.
And that's not good.
And that makes absolutely no sense, again, in this form of government. Now, if you look at the county, the county you run by, you know, you run as a partisan, that's different. That's totally different. But in our form, it doesn't make any sense whatsoever. So this is, with that exception, this is a bill that was out there last year that we opposed, and so I felt pretty comfortable after listening to you individually over different times on saying, hey, we would like to keep it the way it is. And so we've already vocalized to them and sent written testimony to not change that. Now, I don't know what that does in the end, but I think, Commissioner Blanchard, you're, you're correct in asking the public to weigh in. A lot of people don't realize what's going on at the state level. We realize, because it's kind of what we do, we have to pay attention to it. There are a lot of somewhat bizarre bills out there, and honestly-
You think?
That happens. I mean, you get those filed, because it takes an individual to file it, it takes a committee to let it go, and it takes, you know, a majority to, to vote it in. So you never know how far something's going to make, or make it in the, how far it's going to make it in the process. But so we always have to presume it could make it, and it could be extremely odd.
All the way to the Jon Stewart Show.
Yeah, could be. This one seems to have traction, because again, you're seeing a lot of attention on both sides. So I think it's probably good to encourage folks on that. I will say in the future, as we think about these, the more that they file, it's a little harder for us to coordinate, because that's, you know, any discussion would be in a formal meeting like this, and we have to be careful with that. So if there is a bill and, and there's some pretty strong opinions on it, we might end up wanting to check in this meeting, just to be sure that we don't have one opinion that's strongly, that's forwarded by one commissioner and a different opinion by chance. It could be forwarded by a different commissioner, because that'll confuse our legislative folks. But generally speaking, most of these are about governance and keeping that with you, and that's what I always preach, is to say, there are people in this, in this community that elect you to make some pretty difficult decisions, and some of these really aren't so difficult, that should very well stay with you. Why would the state want to do that? And let's keep that governance, governance at the local level. So those are pretty easy.
I have one other item here. I was wondering if it'd be helpful for the commission at this point to reconsider how commissioners, what the approach is to board and commission involvement by commissioners. I, I know right now, you know, we have assignments, and, and which, I don't know if it's good or bad or indifferent, but from the way I've, I've looked at things, I'll look at agendas, and if there's a board or commission that has something I'm interested in, I go. I've, I've been to six different commissions this year because of that. And, and then there are other times when I'll, I'll see an agenda, and it never changes. And so if you go to one meeting, you probably, you're pretty well-educated about what happens on that particular board or commission. And so I was, I was just curious about maybe having, we could have staff draw up, like, what's statutory, and then what's voluntary? what's statutory, and then what's voluntary, because any of us can go to any board or commission meeting as it stands, too, where we could be liaison to almost anything.
It seems to me, and maybe, Mr. Gage, you can kind of inform us, but it seems like it, maybe at different times, this is just looking out there, that, for instance, we got somebody on the library board, and maybe there's a reason for that, maybe in, you know, in history, something came along, or maybe there was a capital improvement project at some point coming ahead, and we thought, eh, maybe we got to have somebody on there and kind of watch it, and then after that project was done, we just sort of kept going. Or maybe Brad's group was, well, he's not still here, you know, was getting out of control, spending some money, or doing all kinds of things we didn't agree, we better send somebody over there to watch that arts group over there, you know, and then, but maybe after time, it's a no-longer-needed position. I mean, I kind of agree, some of these boards I look at, some of them are very good. North Central Regional Planning Commission is a great one, I think Airport Authority, I mean, there's some that seem like they're really important that are on, and other ones you kind of look and go, what am I doing here?
Yeah, we'd be happy to go back, give you the full list, give you the ones which are truly what we call informal liaisons, where any of you could show up, your role is just to be in a regular meeting, doesn't give you any more discretion than that. And there are some in which are more formalized. North Central Regional Planning Commission is a good example, it's a voting role. And list those that are voting roles, maybe what the source of that is, and whether or not we believe there's a conflict. There is one that you're on, if you have a, well, if you have a contract with an entity that's not our entity, not related to us in any way, and yet we have a voting role, I think there's a bit of a conflict there, at least a perception of a conflict at the,